Welcome to the City of Lamar. I'm Eric Kurt Cresspin. A lot of things happening in the community with spring coming along. We have a lot of people that are working in their yards, getting out and about. Really want to thank our Parks and Rec Department for working in the parks and getting things ready. I know the summertime is, and the spring is a very busy time for our community. We do have the free dump weekends, so while you're cleaning up your yards, keep that in mind that we do have the free dump weekends every last weekend of the month, so we'll be having those. But in addition to that, I wanted to remind people about the watering. We do have some watering restrictions. If you're not sure about what those are, feel free to contact the city and get that information so that we can make sure that we're all being compliant. Do you know offhand, Rob?
It's usually made whenever.
Right now. Okay. So with that in mind, we'll move on to the next item or move on to our meeting. Start off with the invocation. We have Jared Stroh. Jared?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you, and I am privileged to be standing in front of those that you have called into a place of leadership. We may have voted them in one way or another, but you are the ones that have put them in their place, and I thank you for that. I pray for your blessing over them. I pray that you bless them with wisdom as to figure out what needs to happen and what needs to be put on the back burner. I pray that you would bless them with creativity when the task is requiring an outside-of-the-box kind of solution. I pray that you would bless them with a holy peace when the decision they're about to make is the right one, and a holy uneasiness when it is not something that you think is good for us. I pray, Father, that you would provide all of the needs that they bring to the table so that we can continue to live in this wonderful city, and that you would be glorified in that process, too. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Cresspin, Consolus, would you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The time is now 7:02 PM. We'll call the meeting in order. Roll call.
Joe Consolus.
Here.
Shayla Motta.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kurt Cresspin.
Here.
David Zavala.
Here.
Manuel Temez.
Here.
Brent Bates.
Here.
Rob Evans.
Here.
Kristen Schwartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
All right. I do have one item that I would like to make an amendment to the agenda. We had item number four, which was to the discussion of personnel matters, to include discussions and/or refinements to the city administrator under CRS 246402 subsection four subsection F. I would like to add an item before that to add an executive session as a follow-up on the annual employee reviews for the city clerk, the city treasurer, and the city administrator under CRS 24-6-402 subsection four subsection F. And we will have both of those in two separate sessions. They were meant to be separated out, but they got put together somehow, so if I could have a motion for that.
Can I make one?
Oh, yes.
In the consent agenda, when they published the license for JR's Country Store, they neglected to put the name and address of the actual applicant, which was U-Pop Holdings. It was a typo. It was not an intentional thing, but U-Pop Holdings is the applicant doing business as JR's Country Store. So I just wanted to point that out before it got approved, or before going for approval.
Okay. So we need to do the review of the agenda first. So this is a separate one for the agenda modification. I know you didn't have anything on that.
I'm sorry, what?
This is a agenda modification. So I had asked about the, doing a agenda modification to add the executive session. So I was asking for a motion to allow that change to the executive session, to add that in.
And Kurt, so you added the personnel matters for the quarterly reviews under 4F, and then you're leaving the number five, which would be number five?
And so that would fall under 4E if it's for negotiation of a contract?
Oh, for the negotiation, okay. So we will have two items to modify. The first one would be, number four would be modified to include discussions for the quarterly reviews for the clerk, treasurer, and administrator. And then item number five would be discussion of personnel matters to include refinements to the city administrative contract under CRS 246402 subsection four subsection E. So we need to do that before we do the U-Pop Holding? Yes.
I move to amend the agenda to add, item number four is executive session for discussion of personnel matters regarding the annual reviews of the city clerk, treasurer, and administrator under CRS 24-6-402 subsection four subsection F, and moving item four down to item five as presented, but it is 24-6-402 subsection four subsection E.
Okay.
I'll sign that.
We have a motion, a second. This will be verbal. All those in favor signify with an "I."
"I."
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor, Rob?
All right. Now we'll move on from the review of the agenda to the consent agenda. It looks like we need, do we need to separate this out?
I don't think we necessarily.
Separate, or are we just making that as an informational?
I think I made it more as an informational. It was a typo. The license still stands. Everything on it was correct, with the exception of the document that we prepared.
Okay. And I didn't see any items that need to be separated out of the bills, so there was nothing in that one. Okay. Does the council have any questions on the consent agenda?
I don't have any. I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. It's submitted. All those in favor signify with an "I."
"I."
Opposed, same sign.
Shayla?
And Manuel?
Unanimous in favor, Rob?
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is for audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council on an item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city treasurer's report. Kristen?
Thank you, Mayor. And council, I just was going to give a little grant update. We were awarded the grant that we were applied for, for the service line inventory and potholing for the water and wastewater, and we got approved for that grant and awarded that grant. And so there, I expect to see the PO for that coming probably this week. So I don't know that there'll be a contract to bring, to bring back, but if there is, I'll make sure to give it on the agenda.
And what was that estimating?
That was, you know what? I didn't bring the amount. I didn't bring the amounts with me. I apologize. And then Friday, there is a GOCO meeting with the GOCO board. They're considering approval of our master plan grant, recreation master plan grant. Rob is going to take my place and go with Tess, and Anthony's going to meet them up there, and they'll be available for board questions while they make the final consideration of our grant application. So we're excited about that, to move forward with that. And then today, we met with DOLA. We had a meeting regarding water and wastewater, applying for an EIAF grant for the planning and engineering stage of the wastewater treatment plant. We had a very good meeting with Tara and Brent from DOLA, encouraging us to go forward. So we're planning a meeting for later this week with the team to decide exactly the amounts that we need to apply for, for that planning stage of the grant. She has some very encouraging news. They have several rounds this year, which they have $30 million in each round, and so we're excited about that. There's one in April, and one in July, and then one in December. So we have three opportunities to get that application through. So we're going to continue to meet with that and move that forward. So I'll keep you updated on how all of that goes as well. And then that's all I have for this evening, unless you have any questions for me.
I don't have any. You're good? Thank you. All right. Thank you. Moving on to the city clerk's report. Linda?
Our sales and use tax collected in February for January was $409,171.49, which was up 14.78% from 2023. Our year-to-date collections were $1,505,72.14, which was up 8.62%, or $79,833.24 from 2023.
Nice increases.
Yes.
Any questions for the city clerk?
I don't have any. No? Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda. And that's all I have.
Next item on the agenda would be the city administrator.
All right. Reminder to the council that the CML conference is June 18th to 21st in Loveland. We have a Lamar High School stadium groundbreaking on March 18th at the stadium. It's at 14th Street, south of Yucca. It's going to be ceremonial groundbreaking there. Coffee with Rob. We, that's not March 20th and 21st. It's going to be daylight donuts, not this week, but the next week, and then it's going to be brewing to others the following week. Powers Economic Prosperity next week on the 21st. They're going to have a pet banquet. It's their annual banquet. Some of the projects that are ongoing, Parks and Rec, we mentioned their spring cleanup, but they've got new weight equipment going in there right now. It's going down for just a little while, but they got all kinds of new equipment going in there, and you should see some upgrades of the hardware we have inside. And she mentioned that this GOCO partnership meeting we're going to have on Friday, we're going to come back with some money for our master plan. IT, the two biggies we have for IT are that, we're going to have it at the next council meeting, but we're going to be doing those pen testing, or we're going to be proposing pen testing group. And they have started the camera project, and I believe we started at the animal shelter, right? Was it that we did the animal shelter already? We've already started installing. It's going to be a slow install, over six months worth of putting in new cameras all around town, so you'll be seeing a lot. It'll help us with security and our reporting and with our police. All right. Let me see. HR. Our police search is ongoing. I'll give you guys an update when we have a full update. We have a couple of applications already in there. It's not gangbusters and, you know, hundreds of people applying, but we do have a couple. Let me see. Oh, there are, there were 19, oh, we got a lot of offers. Our SWIM, our lifeguards, we offered all of our lifeguard jobs. We got 19 different ones, job openings. We do have a couple that we're going to be focused on here real soon, and the deputy public works director is one of those that we're going to be looking at and trying to press to get somebody to apply. That, well, we had last year, several come in and ended up not taking a job, but that's going to be another priority of us, of ours, when we get out there. Let's see. BDC, oh, the Crossroads Horizons. Is Ann Marie still here?
Yeah.
Oh, she took off already. I have some notes for her, though. So if you notice, we've had a lot of our community master plan meetings this last week, and there was quite a bit of participation, several of them that I went to. And some of the trends we're seeing already are the aesthetics, economic health, housing access. Housing was the biggest one that I saw. Parks and Rec, open spaces, there were several comments and requests on open spaces. So there's some themes coming out in all of our meetings already. There's going to be a flyer out in late March, early April, with the opportunity for residents to prioritize and give additional comments, so we'll be taking our written input in as well. Let's see. Oh, we already had our urban renewal, and I know that we may talk about LPI Main Street later, so I'll leave that one open. Let me see. Oh, events planning is already underway for the summer. I know that we're planning on one with the, with the different hospital and community health, and we're going to upgrade this year. We're going to increase the food and the different types of food, and last year was the best one, or at least since I've been here, three now, so it was really good, and I think that was a great time for us to rub shoulders and elbows with the citizens. Building Department is busy as usual. She's going to be going, Stephanie, our building official, is going to attend the 2024 Colorado Chapter of International Code Council Education. How was that, how did that go?
It was really good.
Did you learn a whole bunch there? Did we get our money? Yeah, I thought so. All right. So let me see. Community development marketing, continue to look for influence, ways to improve our communications. And I know one of those is our, we're going to have some report come from Jerome on the city buy app, so I know that that's coming up some, soon, too. And I did show a couple of you guys, and not everybody, but for our street apartments and our public works, did you guys see that the blue building is actually going up? That's a good thing. And we did get some additives to our parking lots that we have out there in Escondido Park. That will make that last a lot longer, so that it keeps dust down. It's, I think it'll, it'll help, and if we can keep that on there pretty good, I think that that parking lot will stay a lot better for a long time.
Thank you, Rob. Ben? Speaking of the blue building, I had a couple residents the last two weeks ask me what, when the timeline is for groundbreaking at Arby's. Do we have any updates on that?
No, we don't, actually. We have been going back and forth. Stephanie, I'm sure can speak on it as well, but they had submitted all their architecture design plans and engineering plans to the city. We did our review, worked with our third-party company, Save Built, to have the review completed, and there were some modifications that needed to be done to bring them compliant before we could approve the permits. So Stephanie had sent them back, and we were waiting for some response back from them with those changes and corrections. So right now, we are waiting for those changes and corrections to come back. Last I spoke to, it was last week, I spoke to one of the main stakeholders in the company, and he had emailed me back saying they were on track, everything was still moving forward. They just needed to, were waiting on the engineering to get completed, so. But his comment was that they were still moving forward. I don't have a timeline for you yet. The last comment that I had heard is they were hoping to break ground within 60 days and hope to be open by the, by November, December, but I'm.
Just waiting on the governor.
Just waiting to get the permits back in and the changes corrected, so.
So I know the fear is usually, you wait on somebody to do their job, and they're actually waiting on you. This is not the case. We've had plenty of prompts, gentle ones, and so they're not upset with it. As I say, everything is good on their end. They're, they're working, and they acknowledge that it's on their end.
Yeah, I think Stephanie can verify. I've checked in with her with texts, with messages, with emails, with Rob, with Stephanie, with Ann Marie, and just recently started checking in with my, the stakeholder contacts that I know of at, in the company. So we're giving the gentle nudges and keeping the ball rolling. We don't want it to be sitting on somebody's desk or waiting for something else to happen. The City of Lamar has been very proactive in trying to get everything that they need to keep this ball moving, so we're just at a standstill for that reason.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah. Going back to Rob's report, there is one thing I would like to say, because I've been asked about it a couple of times. So on this Crossroads Horizon, which is the, our community development, well, not really a master plan, but it's our comprehensive plan for the next 10 years. I've been asked a lot why I haven't been at those, those meetings and why I haven't been attending them, and I wanted to clarify and make sure that everybody knows why, because this process of the comprehensive plan is 110% supposed to be about what the community wants. And I don't want to get involved in those meetings and those discussions and somehow skew what the community wants. I want, when the report comes back to the city council, we really want to hear what the community has to say and what the community wants and desires, and that's the best way for us to learn what you want in the community. So it's not an issue of not caring or not wanting to be involved. It's more of an issue of leaving it wide open for the community to tell us what you want, because we're here to listen with this project. And this is a big project that we really need your involvement on. We need you to get, to attend the meetings. We need you to fill out the surveys and get involved and let us know what you want, because if not, 10 years from now, you'll be saying the council never listens to us, when you have this perfect opportunity to tell us what direction you want us to go. So it's very important, very vital for you listeners out there to get involved and let us know. So I just wanted to throw that out there as well. All right. Any questions for the city administrator?
I want to go back to Escondido Park. Rob, do we have any pet waste stations out there? And the reason why I'm asking, I was out there a couple of weekends ago, and there is a tremendous amount of pet owners out there with their dogs on the soccer fields, and, you know, sure hate to have them not pick up after their pets.
And I don't know what to do about that. I know some communities.
Do they pass the ordinance?
Prevent them not to have pets on the soccer fields, football fields, baseball fields, but we are having a problem with that.
Yes.
Especially at the baseball fields. We have people that take their dog out and run them frequently, you know, although we have the parks, we have North Gateway Park, we have plenty of opportunities, but they're taking them out to these sporting locations where these, the kids are having to run and play and roll in the, in the grass, and if you're not picking up after your dogs, then that's been causing a problem. So do you have any suggestions on what we could do or shouldn't do?
There's, goes from prescriptive and ordinances to, you know, just put some stations out there and please use them and ask them to do that. So, you know, I've always seen more success with putting them out there, supplying the bags, doing that kind of thing, and asking them, please use it and be considerate of others. And if you want to live in a community, be considerate of others, and they'll do that for you, too.
Right.
I think that's the best way as well, being proactive to the situation than reactive with an ordinance that would get them a fine and a slap on the wrist.
Yeah.
And I think, I mean, I know when I go to Colorado Springs, every public park has them because probably the same thing, they realize it's too, and too time-intensive to try to stop it, and people are going to do it one way or another. At least we can put the bags out there and hope.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm going to tell you something funny really quick, is you can't really get the coyotes to read those things and not do it there as well, but bottom line is, we'll put the signs out there, and we're going to, we'll try to get, I'll get something out there.
All right. Sounds good.
We have any of those, the stations that have the bags and the little trash can in the city?
I think we have some out at North Gateway.
Yeah.
The Intended Forest.
Yeah, the Intended Forest.
So yes, we can get some.
I think getting those at just all of, all of those different places would at least help a little bit.
Yep.
But again, pick up after your dogs, people.
Yeah. And we really don't want to do that because of, you know, a handful of people that are taking that responsibility. We don't want to do something that's going to be a detriment for the rest of the community.
I'd like to say something real quick. Speaking of dogs, I know our dogs, it's hard to keep them in your yard and whatever, but the other day, I had to see a little dog get hit right on Oak and Sixth. And later, the owner came looking to see if that was his dog. But keep your dogs on a leash or make sure they're fenced in good. And I know that's hard, but it was really sad to see a little dog get hit.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for the city administrator? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reports and correspondence from the council. Do we have any reports, Joe?
I did, but I left all my notes there at the house in regards to the golf board. I will bring more of a detailed report next meeting. We will be having a meeting tomorrow evening about what's taking place and the events and scrambles that they plan on having. And I do know that here, March the 23rd, they're going to have what they call their annual ice scramble, and it's a three-man scramble. It's 50 bucks a person, and I believe they're allowing up to 20 teams up there to play, and it's going to be a great afternoon. It's going to be March the 23rd, and if you play golf, it'll be a great time to join a three-man scramble or a women's scramble.
Okay. Great. And Shayla, you're new, but you'll have some liaison appointments to different boards, and this is just an opportunity for you to bring what's happening in those different boards, as well as bring any questions or comments from your ward for citizens that have talked to you that you wanted to share with the council or discuss with the council. So in the future, if you have something, this would be the time.
If I may as well. At one point, I'd spoken with Andrew from JVA, and he had approached me because he knew my love for golf, and he expressed his love for golf, and he wanted to do something back. His firm wanted to do something back to the City of Lamar. He wanted to pump back into our community. He said, Joe, we want to do something golfing. What can we do? And so I met with the board a while back, and that really didn't work over too well. And so I had business with Rob at one point, and we really didn't pick up the pieces, and maybe this was a guts and why we didn't pick up the pieces, because I come across an article, and it was an article in North Antonio, Mexico, is how they were using their, their restaurants and their hotels as an attractive, but if you came to stay at their hotels, they gave you a free plate over there at the golf. And, and returned them, they, the golf board would return that receipt over to the county clerk, and they'd get reimbursed. So I thought maybe if we can utilize JVA in that such a way, where if they're willing to pump so much back into our community, maybe we can subsidize that or use those subsidies to pay back the golf board. To where it comes to at our hotel, you get a free plate at the finest nine holes in southeast Colorado.
Well, we can talk to the marketing director or the events planner and see if they want to work with that.
And visit with Andrew and see if that all works out, and see if JVA's okay with that point of attraction, and visit with the golf board, take you down there and Rob, and see how they feel about it.
I mean, they're going to get their money either way, so.
Correct, yeah. And I thought it'd be a great way to promote Lamar and promote, you know, our hotels here.
Okay.
Okay.
Good idea.
It's a thought.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Shayla, you didn't have anything? Jerry?
Yes. I would like to give a big shout out to Amanda Duffy, the Fire Auxiliary, Women's, Women's Fire Auxiliary, sorry, and all the other ladies, and I don't want to mention names because I might miss somebody, but they did a fantastic job on their bake sale. They were raising money to do chair lifts for two of the ambulances, I think, or three, and they were $1,000 each, and they raised their money, and matter of fact, they were like $200 over, so I'd like to give them a big shout out. And whenever you guys see these on Facebook, these ads, order stuff. They're really good. They're, they're good bakers, all of them are. So I'd like to give a big shout out to them. And another thank you to the Veil Board for the sign over on Oak, the speed sign. I think it's kind of slowed down, not 100%, but it's better.
Just so you know, it does log every time somebody goes by, right? So it turns off when it goes too fast, but it's still logging, so we're, we're able to build a history of how many times it goes over.
So it's really nice. Thank you.
Good. Anything else?
No, I'm done.
Okay.
As for me, Rob and I met with Senator Hickenlooper's office, as well as Senator Bennett's office, with his staff on Friday. And the, Senator Hickenlooper sent out an email earlier today, sharing with us that he secured $88 million for Colorado communities and the initial raft of annual funding bills for their congressional-directed spending. And inside that email, it talks about how the City of Lamar was awarded $2 million towards our wastewater treatment plant. So it was very big news, and I think it's great. We have a lot of steps that we have to go through to actually get that money and work with our engineers and give them the plans and everything else. So we have a few more steps to go, but it was nice to see Lamar as part of that congressional-directed spending, and I think it'll be a big help for our project as it moves forward. And anytime we have those kind of funds coming into the community, that's less of a burden on our citizens as we move forward as well, so I thought I would share that good news with us.
David, do you have anything?
No, not at the moment. We do have a meeting coming up on Wednesday for the planning zone.
Okay. Manuel?
We have a meeting coming up on Thursday, so I don't have anything new, unless you have any information on that dinner that you had about the pipeline.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. I forgot about that one as well. Now I forgot what day it was, Wednesday or Thursday?
It was Tuesday.
Tuesday. Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So Tuesday, there was a local leaders dinner and reception for the Arkansas Valley River Basin Water Authority Board. And they had brought everybody into La Junta for a dinner. We talked about different aspects of what's happening in the region when it comes to water. Of course, in an agricultural area, water is gold. It's very valuable and very important. We did have some information shares concerning the conduit and how it's moving forward. And, you know, we're excited to see that conduit project move forward and come to Lamar, although we're at the end of the project. So it'll be 2032 before we see it. But nonetheless, there is progress being made and it was a very good meeting. Pat Mason, our public works director went with me and attended that with me. So it was great to meet all the different representatives throughout the region. But that's all I had on that one.
All right.
Brett?
Pep elected a new board. Rick Robbins is the new president. Lawrence Brazzi is the new VP. Tyler Thrall remained as the treasurer and Anne Marie Crampton as the secretary. Joe Spitz and Dr. Rosanna Reyes were elected at large representatives to the executive committee. The board will vote for an additional at large rep at the annual meeting in Holly on Thursday, March 21st. Pep has also awarded four facade grants to area businesses that are interested in approving, improving their storefront. More grants are still available. Businesses can apply for funds on the Pep site at prowerspep.org. And Pep has applied for a workforce resilience grant to create a leadership program for local residents. And I was asked to remind everyone, let me get to it, to, to, that, nope, it was on here. Sorry about that. Couldn't remember where Tally texted me at. The annual banquet will be March 21st at 6:00 PM at the Holly Pride Center in Holly, Colorado. Please RSVP to Cheryl or Tally, Cheryl Sanchez or Tally Harmon at Pep. And the business enchantment program for the facade updates applications are due by the end of March. And that's all I have.
Okay. All right. With that done, we'll move on to the old business. First item under old business is an ordinance on the second reading. This is ordinance amending Article Two of Chapter Six of the Lamar Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 edition of the International Residential Code with amendments. For those of you who are watching, we do, anytime there is an ordinance placed or voted upon, we have to read that in the first reading as well as in the second reading. And we have to read that aloud. It is a longer process, but it ensures that the public is aware of what's being passed in these ordinances. So it's part of our regular process. So Stephanie, are you ready to read this one again?
Yes, I'm, I'm ready.
All right.
Ordinance number 1271, an ordinance amending Article Two of Chapter Six of the Lamar Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 edition of the International Residential Code with amendments. Whereas the International Code Council, Inc. has issued a 2018 edition of the International Residential Code, and whereas on July 26, 2021, the City Council of the City of Lamar adopted the 2018 edition of the International Residential Code, however, Chapter Six, Article Two, Division Seven, Section Six dash 184 was not amended to reflect the changes in the 2018 edition. And whereas the City Council of the City of Lamar, Colorado desires to repeal and amend Section Six dash 184 to reflect the necessary changes since adoption of the 2018 edition of the International Residential Code with amendments for application within corporate limits of the City of Lamar, Colorado, and for application to property owned by the city outside the city's corporate limits. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Lamar, Colorado, Part One, that Chapter Six, Article Two, Division Seven, Section Six dash 184, the Lamar Municipal Code is hereby repealed in its entirety and replaced to read as follows. Section Six dash 184 amendments, A, the code adopted herein is hereby modified by the following amendments. Number one, section R 101.1 title is amended by inserting the City of Lamar. Two, section R 104.5 identification is deleted in its entirety. Three, section R 105.2 work exempt from permit is amended by replacing 24 with 48, paragraph seven. Four, section 106.3.1 approval of construction documents is amended by inserting a period after approved and deleting the rest of the paragraph. Five, section R 107.3 temporary power is amended by replacing ICC electrical code with current electrical code adopted by the state of Colorado. Six, section R 110.3 certificate issued is amended by deleting paragraphs four, seven, and eight. Seven, section R 301.2 climate geographic design criteria is amended by adding the following. Ground snow load is 30 pounds. Wind speed is 110 miles per hour. Seismic design category B. Subject to the damage from weathering is severe. Frost depth is 36 inches. Termite is moderate to heavy. Winter design temperature is 57, ice barrier, or sorry, is five degrees. Ice barrier underlayment required, yes. Flood hazards, November 17, 1982. Mean annual temperature is 53.1 degrees Fahrenheit. Number eight, table R 301.5 minimum uniform distributed live load sleeping room is amended by replacing 30 with 40. Nine, section R 309.2 separation required is amended by replacing a half inch with five eighths inch type X. Number 10, section 309.5 fire sprinklers is deleted in its entirety. 11, section R 317.2 ground contact is amended by deletion of the section, replaced it with the following. All wooden contact with the ground shall be approved. Pressure preservative wood, treated wood suitable for ground contact use, except untreated wood may be used where entirely below groundwater levels or continuously submerged in fresh water. Number 12, section R 317.1.4 wood columns is amended by deleting exceptions one and two. Thirteen, section R 18.1.2 field treatment is deleted in its entirety. Fourteen, section R 401.1 application is amended by inserting this sentence, wood foundations are not allowed at the end of the section. Fifteen, section R 402.1 wood foundations is deleted in its entirety. Sixteen, section R 405.2 wood foundations is deleted in its entirety. Seventeen, section R 504 pressure preservative treated wood floors on ground is deleted in its entirety. Eighteen, chapter 11, energy efficiency is deleted in its entirety and replaced by the following. All new and remodeled structures will have a minimum of R 13 insulation in the walls and R 30 in the ceilings. Windows will be thermal type and exterior doors will have storm doors or will be of the insulated type which includes solid core doors. Nineteen, section G 2425.8 equipment not required to be vented is amended by deletion of paragraph seven. Twenty, section G 2445 unvented room heaters is deleted in its entirety. Twenty-one, section P 2603.5.1 sewer depth is amended by inserting 12 inches. Twenty-two, chapter 34 general requirements is deleted in its entirety. Twenty-three, chapter 35 electrical definitions is deleted in its entirety. Twenty-four, chapter 36 services are deleted, deleted in its entirety. Twenty-five, chapter 37 branch circuit and feeder requirements is deleted in its entirety. Twenty-six, chapter 38 wiring methods is deleted in its entirety. Twenty-seven, chapter 39 power and lighting distribution is deleted in its entirety. Twenty-eight, chapter 40 devices and luminaries is deleted in its entirety. Twenty-nine, chapter 41 appliance installation is deleted in its entirety. Thirty, chapter 42 swimming pools is deleted in its entirety. Thirty-one, chapter 43 class two remote control signaling and power limited circuits is deleted in its entirety. Thirty-two, chapter 44 reference standards is amended by deleting ICC EC dash O six, ICC electrical code and replacing it with the electrical code adopted by the state of Colorado. Thirty-three, appendix A sizing and capacities of gas piping is deleting in its entirety. Thirty-four, appendix B sizing of vending system servicing appliances equipped with draft hoods, category one appliances and appliances listed for use with type B vents is deleted in its entirety. Thirty-five, appendix C exit terminals of mechanical draft and direct vent vending systems is deleted in its entirety. Thirty-six, appendix D recommended procedure for safety inspections of an existing appliance installation is deleted in its entirety. Thirty-seven, appendix E manufactured housing used as drawings is deleted in its entirety. Thirty-eight, appendix F radon control methods is deleted in its entirety. Thirty-nine, appendix I private sewage disposals deleted in its entirety. Forty, appendix L permit fees is deleted in its entirety. Forty-one, appendix M daycare R three occupancy is deleted in its entirety. Forty-two, appendix N vending methods is deleted in its entirety. Forty-three, appendix O automatic vehicular gate is deleted in its entirety. Forty-four, appendix P sizing of water piping system is deleted in its entirety. Forty-five, appendix Q tiny houses is deleted in its entirety. Forty-six, appendix R light struck light constructions deleted in its entirety. Forty-seven, appendix S drawbale construction is deleted in its entirety. Accumulative supplement to the International Residential Code is hereby adopted within the city. Part Two repealer, all ordinance resolutions, bylaws, and regulations of the city ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent only of such inconsistency. This repealer shall not be construed to revive any ordinance, resolution, bylaw, or regulation or part thereof. Here to fore repealed. Part Three, servability, any section, paragraph, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be held invalid or unenforceable, then validity or unenforceability of such section, paragraph, clause, or provision shall not affect any other provisions of this ordinance. Part Four, effective date, this ordinance shall be in full force an effective 30 days after publication following final passage and adoption.
Okay. So that was our second reading. So the council, we would just need, is that right? So we would just need to get a motion on this and move forward.
So moved.
Have a motion. Shayla, second. Any final questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Mr. DeBra?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to schedule a public hearing for a special event permit for the Lamar Chamber of Commerce Cinco de Mayo. They wanted to have this event on May the 4th of 2024 from 11:00 AM until 10:00 PM at the Chamber Building Lamar in the Chennen Forest. So this would be the Beer Garden Special Events Permit. So the next, the next public hearing option would be March 25th, 2024, as close to seven o'clock as possible. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So are we good with scheduling it for that time and date?
So much.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Next item on the agenda is to award bid to Taylor Septic and Plumbing for swimming pool shower repairs. This has been a big issue over there, so this is good to have. Kristen?
So they got current bids for me. They called all the plumbers in the area that are licensed, only got two bids back. Council had approved $15,000 in the 2024 budget for repairs. The repairs, the bids both came in drastically different, but higher than the $15,000, about 60% higher on that low bid. But the repairs are crucial. They need to be done before we can open the pool up this year in May. And so we're just asking council to authorize the over expenditure of what you approved for that particular project and go with Taylor Septic and Plumbing. They could get started right away as well. I talked to Charles about it. And their bid was $24,938.
Just one question. Where are we going to pull the funds? For that, since we only allowed 15 and we need to come up with about another 10.
So that'll be a general fund expense. And so, yeah, that's where it's at. So I'll just have to watch the entire general fund. And if we over expend the whole fund, then I'll come back for supplemental towards the end of the year. You know, so it'll just depend on how things shake out through the entire general fund. So I feel like, you know, we will probably have some room. We usually do, but I just didn't, since we specifically named this item in our capital budget for 2024 and it was so much higher, I wanted to bring it back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we would need both tonight or just the approval of the bid?
I would just like, what we're asking is just for you to let, allow us to go with Taylor and their bids that they submitted.
So you don't need the, or the additional funds yet?
None at this point. I just wanted, you know, for you to be aware of what.
Okay. All right, council.
Did both of them meet the obligations of the bid?
They did.
Okay.
Has significant difference between the two.
Yeah.
The biggest one is the actual shower units themselves, the enclosures or whatever. I mean, almost, yeah, like $12,000 difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I make a motion to award the bid to Taylor Septic and Plumbing.
You have a motion in a second. Any final questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. That leaves us to miscellaneous items. Do we have any miscellaneous items tonight? I know we did have one. I was approached upon. Prowess County Public Health had approached me. They have the Narcan vending machines that are free vending, but they are, they have, they kind of look like newspaper vending units with the old ones. But they do have them and they had asked if we could put one in one of the lobbies. They would man it, they would fill it, they would watch it. It was just, do we put it in the city buildings or not? And I told her I would bring it up as a discussion.
I think we can find a space for it. It may not be in the hallway where we have the other stuff right now, but we can probably, how many are they talking, one?
Just one.
Just one? We'll find a place for it. I mean, I don't want it to be promising it's going to be right in the library hallway or anything like that. But maybe we bring it over to the senior center. Maybe we can clear the community building somewhere. I mean, I don't want to.
I need to put it in the.
I don't want to say exactly where I'm putting it right now is what I'm getting.
Right. Well, I just hate to put it where it's not accessible. That would be.
Yeah. Where is the county putting theirs at? There, multiple, I'm assuming, but.
I'm not sure.
There are two. And so they're waiting to get approval for the courthouse.
Inside?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we feel like maybe stuff needs like training on if we had an incident? Do we feel like it wouldn't work?
I can ask her.
Somebody?
Yeah.
I mean, just let us know what we need to.
At the location where it would be housed kind of thing?
Yeah. I think that goes into the whole liability issue of.
We did talk about for the, for the police, we're giving people the option of learning how to do it in case they want to, but not mandating it. The training's not that hard and we can, we can get that.
Yeah. I think the option, the idea was just to have it available for the public to go get it and in, you know, their way of distributing it for people who wanted to.
I will get it for anybody who wants to learn how to do it.
Want it to be, you know, where the city takes that responsibility on.
Yes, it seems like the best question. You know, panic and wants to know when they use it and everybody's.
Well, we can bring it back and get, you know, a decision.
I can get anybody the training. They, they have to go through Red Cross or if I have to get through, I mean, I can get somebody to come in here and give a class.
Well, we'll see what we can find between now and the next meeting and just, I don't know if they need to be done.
I can have Megan give you a call. If that would work.
Kurt? I have one, hey, Rob, a question for you. Did you come up with a place for the Girl Scout Cookies to possibly do anything? You know, when they were talking with their presentation about drawing on the sidewalks?
Oh, well, we, we had approved them, but they said they were looking at some options on whether or not it was going to be the permit or could they do just the chalk?
They were going to work with you.
Right. And they have not come back after the first time. I said, hey, just give me whether you, you know, what your requirements are. Does it have to be the permanent kind or semi-permanent kind? Because I know that there were a couple of people who made comments about not wanting it to be permanent, but you know, no decision.
Yeah. I know they were talking about possibly doing it in front of the Pocket Park or areas around the Pocket Park or Long Beach Street during, for during events and things like that. So hopefully they've decided on a few locations they can bring back and present.
I didn't know that yesterday was the last day for Girl Scout Cookies to be sold. So that was.
I found out the hard way too. I resisted the whole time, so it's probably best that I find out until afterwards.
Okay. So do we have any other miscellaneous items we need to discuss before we move into executive session?
No.
Okay. With no other items, we need a motion to move into executive session for personnel matters to discuss. for personnel matters to discuss the quarterly reviews for the clerk, treasurer and administrator.
So moved.
Yeah, the second. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
So with these, these two executive sessions, there will be no decisions coming out of the executive sessions. So we will adjourn promptly afterwards. Uh, we appreciate you attending tonight and viewing it online. Uh, next meeting is Monday, March 25th at 7:00 PM. We hope to see you then.